All right, looks like everybody is here. Welcome everyone to Commissioner's Court. Why don't we begin and let's stand for a prayer and a pledge of allegiance.
Lord, we thank you for this beautiful day today that you've given us, Lord, to come and make plans, Lord, for our county. I pray that you'll be with this court and bless us, Lord, and give us your wisdom, Lord, as we make decisions for the county and be with all the officials of this county, be with all our public servants, Lord, and our employees in our county to bless us, Lord, and keep us safe today, Lord, as we do your business and continue to bless this country, Lord. Thank you for all you've done to us, Lord. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome again to Commissioner's Court. This is our second, what I'll call, normal meeting. It's actually our third meeting of the month, counting an insurance workshop that we had. But today is the 26th of August 2019, final meeting of this month. It's just after 9:00 a.m. We'll begin item number one, public comments and/or requests for information on non-agenda items in keeping with the Open Meetings Act. I don't have any requests to speak, but if there's anyone that would like to, this is your time. All right, if not, we'll move to item number two. We have two sets of minutes to consider. The first was a meeting on August 2nd, an insurance workshop. We'll take that one separately.
Make a motion when we approve the minutes?
Motion is made by Commissioner Fitch.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Applewhite. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then right behind that, our last regular meeting, two weeks ago, on the 12th, we had a set of minutes from that meeting as well.
Make a motion.
Motion's made by Commissioner Fitch, second by Commissioner Parker for approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number four, consider and possibly approve the return of the skid unit off of the Argo Volunteer Fire Department Truck #81 to the Cookeville Fire Department and the truck to Precinct 3. Well, that's how I worded it on the agenda, but we may have a slight deviation on that, a timing difference. And Chief Logan is here, and Chief has just shared some information with me that I would like for him to share with you and help us work through this decision. As you'll recall, there was a situation where we had a truck that had been, I don't know what the right word is, given, transferred, relocated from Cookeville to Argo, and then Cookeville wanted that truck back, or some pieces of it. And Commissioner Applewhite had talked about getting their truck returned to Precinct 3. So at this point, I'd like to hear from you, Mike, and tell us what you feel like your needs are, so that you can help us make this decision.
Well, when we made the deal between me and Wesley, I told him, when he let us have those trucks to start Argo, that he could have that truck back. At that time, I didn't know Commissioner Applewhite was going to want the truck itself. And so, fascinating hearing your honor, but he told me the other day, after I talked to you, that he wanted it right now, which is the bed and the skid unit, talk of it. And we discussed and voted that we wanted to keep the truck in service until our new truck gets here and we get it in service. And that's what I told him when we made the deal, that when we got a new truck got into service, then he could have whatever. And I will stick behind that and keep the truck in service. We don't need to take it out this time of year, especially with the fire season going like it is. And I just, if that is not in a hurry for the truck, I'd rather keep the truck in service until ours gets up and running.
What's the expected timing on your new truck?
We ordered a truck two weeks ago. They told us it was 10 weeks out.
Okay.
And then probably, I'm gonna say 60 to 90 days, get it available after we get it.
So we're a couple of months at least away.
Yeah, at least.
When you get that new truck, what are you going to do as far as the equipment for that truck?
We'll have to put a bed and stuff on it. BMT's gonna get that one. And we'll have to buy a skid unit, my old Ford. And with that being said, we may want to ask y'all for a loan, but that's later on, I guess, down the road.
Okay. Is anybody from Cookeville here? No? Okay. Have you had this discussion in the last few days with Chief McCollum about your desire to keep this until the new truck comes in?
No.
Okay. And he still has a, just help me remember the facts, he still has a skid unit with a leaking tank on it? Is that part of his problem?
That's my last knowledge of it, yes. Have you heard anything since last week?
Supposedly, we're gonna get it fixed over a week, yeah, but I've never heard anything.
Okay. So hopefully, and if we need to, if we need to help them financially to get that fixed, it sounds like it's important that that truck of Cookeville's, which is two-year-old, one year, one or two years old?
Two-year-old.
Gets up and running and has a functioning tank on it. At least we've got...
When me and you talked about it, I thought maybe he was wanting the tank off of this truck to fix that one, you know? But he told me he was gonna buy a new truck, put this skid unit on it. Now, if he don't have the money to fix his other, then where's he gonna get the money to buy a new truck?
And I don't know the answer to that, but it looks like here, here in the next, hopefully he gets that tank fixed, and then he'll have a functioning truck
Exactly.
With a tank on it. If, if you continue to keep this one until your new truck comes in, you've got a truck with functioning skid unit on it. How does this affect your plans?
It doesn't affect mine. I just want, I just hate to see a truck come out of commission and not being used when we need it right now, the time it is. This is a high fire potential right now. You know, it's, you know, I just think we don't need to cut one out. If you do that, you're gonna have two damn men.
Okay.
So that's really gonna put a bind on the county.
And if we can get Cookeville's tank fixed, he's got a truck that'll handle it, leave this with Mike, with a functioning older truck and a tank, and then at that time, we give the equipment, we go back to the plan, give the equipment, Cookeville, and the truck to Precinct 3?
Well, it's the back of the county, yes.
Does that sound reasonable?
I'd say, did he not tell you he had a tank built? They just didn't have it on their head?
Supposedly, that's what he said, they were building a tank to put on the truck.
Okay.
Get it out of service.
Not repairing the tank that was on there that had the leak?
About way out of the chute.
Okay.
The tank, the truck was sitting at a house right there, right in Cookeville, nearly, well, I guess it was all week last week, I saw it sitting at a house. I don't know, I'm not sure whose house it was, but the truck was sitting there, and I guess they were getting ready to change the tank out on there or something. Supposedly, they have built a stainless steel tank to put on there, but I don't know that for a fact.
Okay. All right, does this plan sound reasonable to you all?
Yeah.
I will contact Chief McCollum and tell him what's been decided here. They may be upset about this, hopefully they won't be, but I understand, and so I'm glad you came.
Well, I know you want the problem to go away, and ain't nobody wanting to go away more than others.
I understand.
I'm tired of myself.
I understand. Okay.
But that's the fact, we need to put the truck out of commission.
Okay. All right, well, we've got this as a motion. It's worded a little bit different. If we can, based on what you've heard here and what it sounds like you all want to do, if I can get a motion to allow Argo to continue to use their truck and equipment, skid unit of their truck 81, formerly Cookeville 51, is that right?
Yes.
Formerly 51, until the new Argo truck comes in, at which time, the equipment and, can they have the light bar for Cookeville?
Oh, yeah, would it be?
The light bar will revert, is that okay? Can they get the light bar off of it? Will go to Cookeville, the truck will go to Precinct 3, and you'll have your new truck.
That's good, except why does a truck go to Precinct 3? I need a truck as bad as Precinct 3.
I'll let you battle that one out.
That's, like I said, I told you the other day that we, that'd be fine.
Okay.
I said, you know, I understand, you do need another patch truck. But I just said, we wanted to come back to the county, back to the rest of it.
So for the time being, the motion just needs to say it will revert to the county, and we can decide who gets it at that time?
Right.
Okay. Everybody understand how I've worded it? I'd just like one of you all to make that motion.
Make that motion.
Okay, motion is made by Commissioner Applewhite.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fitch. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Joyce, you think you got that? Okay. Item number five, consider and possibly approve a plat for the Edgewood Park subdivision, Titus County, Texas Lewis Bradley Survey Abstract #21. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank y'all.
Is that what you have in your hands there?
Yes, it is. This is the plat for that, and it was Clint, I was a bunch about it and everything, but it's been there since 2000.
I'm gonna read what Clint has prepared for us. The only thing that is the least bit iffy about this is the size of the lots, and I'll tell you that upfront, these are half-acre lots as opposed to one-acre lots, but you need to hear the rest of the story. First of all, the, as a reminder, TCEQ requires a minimum of half-acre. They have met that requirement, but this is an older subdivision, in fact, a 20-year-old subdivision. Let me, let me read this. This is first of all from Justin Kleem, he's with the Surveyor. "Mr. Lee, I'm working on surveying about 20 small tracts that were previously surveyed by Gail Blalock in 1999 for then-owner Ricky Perez. See attached survey done by Mr. Blalock. The majority of these tracts have since been bought by Mr. Lentz at different times. Two of them are still in the ownership of others. Mr. Lentz would like to start selling these off. Based on my understanding, these tracts would be grandfathered in when it comes to obtaining septic permits, even though by today's standards of Titus County, they would not meet those requirements. Doing anything not legal in the way of subdivisions in Titus County is not something any party involved here wants to do, and I just wanted to check with you to make sure these would be considered grandfathered in as far as Titus County goes, and would not be subject to any county restrictions that would affect any new subdivisions being done at this time." Now here, Clint Bain's addition here, and of course, he's here, he can add anything to this, or he can answer any questions. "I have reviewed the information on the appraisal district website and researched the property at the county clerk's office. The property in question is best described as an unplatted subdivision, meaning that the development of property first began in 99, when lots were sold off, ranging in size from .683 up to .702 of an acre. The development was named Edgewood Park in a document recording declaration of restrictions, covenants, and conditions, recorded on August 24th, 99, filed by developer Ricky Perez. The survey of the property that you forwarded to me was never recorded as a plat, according to the clerk's office. Fast forward to today, this development would not meet Titus County's current development requirements. However, with various sales of the property already having occurred, I do not feel that we should make the owners bring this development up to current requirements for their future sales. Two of the original 22 tracts are owned by individuals other than Stephen Lentz or his company." So that means every, that means just two of the remaining tracts are owned by somebody besides Mr. Lentz. He owns the vast majority of these lots. "I do feel that an overall site plan for onsite sewage should be completed in accordance with TAC 285.4 before any further sales of property. This is a matter that TCEQ would highly stress the need for." All right, conclusion, this is a current memo from Clint. "On April 8th of 2019, I received the site plan for the onsite sewage, along with other developments and planning materials submitted by Steve Lentz. The site plan for onsite sewage was made by George Sanford and meets the requirements listed in 285.4. The individual lot sizing noted on the survey plat and the site plan does not meet Titus County minimum lot size of one acre as required by our local orders. However, the lot sizes exceed the minimum lot size required by the state, which is a half acre. As noted in my previous correspondence, I feel to be fair, we should approve the smaller lot sizes as drawn and was originally surveyed when the development was first created in 99, due to the fact that there are two property owners owning and living on the original lots, and Steve Lentz purchased the remaining lots at different times and at their original surveyed size. In short, I feel Mr. Lentz is bringing this subdivision development to the Commissioner's Court for approval. We are being given the opportunity to correct an error that was overlooked by our predecessors back in 99. As to the approval and acceptance of the construction and maintenance of the road, I leave that to the discretion of the Commissioner's Court." So basically, what we're saying is, while we don't have a formally filed subdivision from back 20 years ago, it was a planned development, and it was sold as planned development lots, and we have met onsite sewage design requirements that Mr. Sanford has prepared and provided. So the only question that we've got is, are you okay with approving these less than one acre lots? Again, not newly created, but never previously filed. If you have any questions, Pam is here, she's Mr. Lentz's representative, you have Clint Bain here, and that's the only, that's the only thing that's less than, less than right here. You've heard what Clint's opinion of this, I concur with him.
And on the road, there's plenty of right-of-way to, if they have to upgrade the road, is they have to plant a road?
I believe so. I don't know the exact location of where the water lane is, where the water lane is. I've spoken to the driver, and they explained to me how they laid out the water meters, because they're all the lots are all there, they've been there since 99, and their impactors located in Rockland. Now, how far that is, all of the tiny road, I couldn't say. I don't know what to say, I just went after looking at that. There's plenty of distance between the road, the road surface and where the existing houses are, route pretty separate, that could be an issue. But again, I just don't know how the water lane runs, other than, I said, it runs down. They actually laid a lane down each side of that road.
And no new road was created here?
No, it's been there since 99. When I came to work here in '05, there was probably maybe five, eight houses out there at that time. Speaking with the guys, the driver said, they're thinking probably at one time, there was as many as 15 out there, that the lots were actually definitely, definitely sold and developed at home, and they're thinking probably at least 15, if not all, 27 were done back then. Like I said, like, I got here in '05, getting a wheel down, quite a bit, I think it's like five. And when I first came to work here right now, there's down to two lots, and I wouldn't say some addition to those lots, just sort of well-maintained, that's gonna be the original ones, they stayed with it. Where all the years these other lots were sold, or closed down, or something of that nature, they don't seem, Mr. Lentz is kind of, kind of person. I'd not be able to stand being grandfathered in, because only they can be grandfathered in, grandfathered. But I am, I do believe it would be fair. That's how this was originally laid out, that's how it was sold, that's how it was purchased, with the half-acre lots. And I think now, we just, we gotta consider this, it has a little bit of a win for us to place, it was brought our attention before we can fix the part of the plat that we filed.
And you know you've got a good onsite sewage facility plan.
That's right, that's right. We've got an oversight plan done with TCEQ, they lack really harping on that with me now, for some reason. But, and it's supposed to be done any type of a development before any per�it or any issue.
Do, do all these lots, are there on an established road, or the...
There's a road that's been there since 99. It's, it's an iron road, and it's 3328 is its road number. Now, whether it's designated as a PR or a CR, I think, say, I've heard about that sign I'm sure 100 times, I couldn't tell you what the prefix is on it, but it's one of two, I'm sure. But I said, it's been there, the road's been there for a long time, it's at least the same name, it's an iron road. When I drove that into the other day, I'm not seeing where it's currently, where it's been, any maintenance done to it. But on that same token, I don't really know where it's required any maintenance over the years. With only, only two homeowners on there, I'm sure they had, had it resurfaced. So they just got in case that whenever it's built, they did a pretty good job, done it in with them. And I think maybe where the, you know, where the commissioners, you know, previously had answered to a complaint, and build it, it was, right now, it's pretty smooth for an iron road.
Well, all the roads are private roads until the county accepts them according to the subdivision rules, so if the county hadn't accepted them, they're not, we're not maintaining it.
It's a county road?
I don't know, is it, I don't know whose precincts it is, but in my case...
That don't tell for private, if it's got a road number, it's got a, it's showing on the mound, so.
So is this a county road or a private road, or do we know? It's a private road right now, even though you refer to it as County Road 3328.
Right.
It's really Private Road 3328.
I'm under the property.
Okay. So it's not currently a county maintained road?
What's it come off of?
Doesn't say anything.
What road is it coming off of?
It's right off the interstate.
Yeah, the corner, yeah, it's like 3325.
3325.
Yeah, 3325, I'm like, actually, because I'm 32.
Did you say those lots are a tad bigger than a half acre?
Yeah, they're ranging from 0.69 to 0.72.
What's your, what's your opinion on this?
Well, like I said, it's, you know, like I said, they've been purchased for 21 years, and they keep the sewer and all that, I just don't, I don't think we have a problem. As long as they know if they want us to take the road over, it has to be done within a year, then we take it over, but it has to be through the subdivision plat, how the platform.
And that's not part of your request for this road to be taken over by the county?
No.
Make a motion.
Okay, motion is made by Commissioner Applewhite, whose precinct this road is located and these lots are located in, to approve this subdivision, Edgewood Park, originally developed in 99.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That'll be documented for the minutes. Put all three of those in there. Thanks, Pam.
Thank you, Mr. O'Callaghan.
Item number six, consider and possibly approve polling places for the November 5th election, upcoming special election. And Pam's back there in the back. Pam, what do we need to know here?
I had sent the commissioners a detailed email about the options that y'all have. My first question is, is it the Court's pleasure to consolidate boxes for this election, consolidate voting precincts?
Tell me about your conversation with the party chairs.
Yes, sir. We, I did some research in the Texas Election Code, and we are allowed to consolidate boxes for this election that the governor has ordered. However, one, and this was brought up to me by the party chair, by one of the party chairs, that it might be that case that we have to have at least one precinct per Commissioner's precinct. And so I did some more research on that, and that is indeed the case. So we have to have at least four, and we can have them all open, the state does reimburse for Election Day poll workers, that they only reimburse at $8 per hour, and we like to pay ours $10 per hour. So I don't know, that's something else we need to consider, is do we want to add that little bit of additional to bring them up to the normal $10 per hour? But the state does reimburse the poll workers' wages up to $8 an hour. And that would be the whole reason behind consolidating the boxes, would be so that you have to use fewer poll workers and fewer pieces of equipment to get out to the precincts.
Traditionally, what kind of turnout should we expect for this? We've got a city council election, a single city council election, and then we've got state amendments.
That's correct.
Constitutional amendments.
The city is only wanting us to, they're only contracting with us for one precinct box, and that's gonna be at the Civic Center. So on Election Day, that's where all the city voters will go to vote for that, that position.
So if you want to vote in that city council election, you will have to go to the Civic Center?
Yes.
But somebody who, do we have a case where there are some city residents that are not in that precinct box that may have to go to two polling locations?
The, let me just look at that. Yes, for example, Precinct 14, which is the voter precinct 14, is the annex over here. Well, they're city voters, but, so they would go to the annex and then out to the Civic Center.
But we can't tell the city you have to be able to vote in the city council election in more than one location?
No, sir, we can't.
So that's their choice. We're not creating that problem where somebody has to vote at two different locations.
That's correct. And of course, early voting will include all of it.
What kind of a turnout should we expect of county voters who are only interested in voting in the constitutional amendment election? What, at less than 1,000 the last time we had a comparable?
They, there was very few, I mean...
May have been less than that, I think, when we talked about that.
Yes, it was, I think it was 700 and some odd voters turnout for the constitutional amendments.
And that vote was...
County one.
Four years ago?
2015.
And that was the year we had an alcohol vote?
A liquor option.
So that, that drew a lot of people out. So the expectations of the turnout for somebody who's just wanting to vote on constitutional amendments relatively low.
Right.
So that's the justification for fewer...
The only thing that might affect it this time is that one of the amendments has to do with an income tax, and I would think that would draw a few more voters out.
So you're proposing a total... So you're proposing a total of four boxes be open?
That would be our minimum, yes.
Is that kind of what you're thinking, what you'd like to do?
That would probably, yes, that would be my suggestion.
And you've got, how long early voting at your office?
Ten full days, two of those days being twelve-hour days.
Tuesday through Friday, and then...
Monday through Friday, and then the next Monday through Friday.
Okay, two full weeks, two, but no weekend voting?
No weekend voting.
Okay.
The twenty-ninth and thirty-first of October would be twelve-hour days.
You guys have comments or questions?
I'm good with that recommendation.
Of, of four boxes, one for each precinct? What would those locations be?
For Commissioner Precinct number one, it'd be the Civic Center. For number two, it would be the Courthouse Annex. For number three, the IBEW Local Union Hall. And number four would be South Jefferson Baptist Church. Of course, that's at your pleasure as well, so.
Can we get those? So the question is, are you all okay with one box for your entire precinct at those locations, or do you want Pam to do something different?
The Civic Center, the Annex, the, the Local Union Hall, and South Jefferson Baptist Church would be the four boxes that, that would be my recommendation.
Okay, so we really don't care about, but the boxes that these guys govern supposedly in rural areas, is that...
I'm, I'm willing to open every precinct if we need to.
Oh, we care, we care.
I do too, I do, out of compassion and creation.
And I'll tell you, I'll tell you, part of, part of my thought behind this is, you know, you're given two full weeks of early voting. If we weren't doing that, I'd say, yeah, we need a bunch more boxes. I'm hoping that everybody's going to come to town at least once during that two-week period, no?
I just worry about that, I mean, you know, we put them all right there in town, so it looks kind of like we're moving on the road. I'm sorry, it's...
It's a small county. I, I don't know. That is something to consider, fellas, so let's, let's let Pam know what you want to do here.
I think we ought to do it just like you recommended before, but everybody comes to town to cover the court out.
Those are pretty easy locations to get to in town, so I think it'd be pretty handy, with early voting and everything.
What about the, you said the Annex would, and the Civic Center would be the two places that the city folks would have to go to?
No, no, just, just one.
Cities only at Civic Center.
If you want to vote, if you are eligible to vote, and you want to vote in the city council election, you must go...
To the Civic Center.
To the Civic Center. If you live in the precinct that would normally vote over here at the Annex, then you're going to have to vote for your constitutional amendments there.
There.
You'll make two trips. If you're a county resident, you'll only go to one location. If you're a county resident and a city resident, you'll have to potentially go to two places.
Well, could that, could those two not be combined to, to make, to keep them having to go to different places? That's what I was looking at there, is, I know I've had to do that myself before, and it's, you know...
At the Civic Center, does that everything there?
Of course, I already...
What's the law on that?
It says you have to have one box open in every precinct, and the fact that the city, that you have to go to the Civic Center to vote in the city election, that was the city's choice, so.
Can you say, can you read the council motion?
Yes, ma'am.
I will entertain a motion if and when you're ready.
One second. What'd you say, you made the motion?
I'll make a motion.
We do it with four boxes.
Commissioner Fitch makes a motion to open four polling locations in addition to the early voting location at the election office, and those locations, one of which is in each of the four precincts, Civic Center, Annex, Union, IBEW Union Hall, and South Jefferson, is the motion.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Riddle. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you Pam.
Thank you.
Item number seven, Judy Cook is here to help us consider and possibly approve an inter-local agreement between the State of Texas Department of Motor Vehicles and Titus County, which also includes a resolution. You want me to read this, you want to tell us about it first?
You do.
You, you want to tell us about it first, then I'll read it, or will it be a self-explanatory?
It should be pretty well self-explanatory.
Okay, let me try this then. Inter-local agreement for provision of equipment and consumables. This contract is made between the State of Texas, acting by and through the Department of Motor Vehicles, and the County of Titus, Texas, acting by and through its duly authorized officials. Whereas the department is statutorily responsible for administering motor vehicle titles and registrations pursuant to the Transportation Code. Whereas County Tax Assessor/Collector acts as agent for the department in the administration of titles and registration. Whereas the Texas Transportation Code provides that to obtain a vehicle title, an owner must apply to the tax assessor/collector. And whereas Texas Transportation Code provides that an application for vehicle registration is made through the county tax assessor. And whereas the department maintains an automated system for the uniform administering of motor vehicle titles and registration, herein identified as the Automated Registration and Title System, or the RTS. And whereas equipment is necessary for processing these titles and registration. And whereas the department and the county desire that the equipment procured by the department, herein identified as the equipment, be installed and operated at locations under the jurisdiction of the county. And whereas associated policies and procedures for the county use of equipment are found in the department's Equipment Guide of the Texas Administrative Code. And whereas the department will furnish the equipment to the county, provided that the county agrees to adhere and comply with the county equipment guide and the requirements established there. Whereas the department provides the county with certain consumable materials that are integral to the administration of motor vehicles, titles, and registration, including disabled placards, cardboard tags, forms, license plates, registration sticker paper, toner cartridges, registration receipt paper, department ad campaign supplies, and other materials. And whereas the department and the county are authorized to enter into inter-local contracts or agreements. Whereas on this day, the County Commissioners Court order or resolution attached and identified as Attachment C, according to the county's execution of this agreement. Let's see, I'm looking for terms of the contract. The contract begins when fully executed by both parties and terminates six years from the date of this contract. Okay, so are we getting new equipment?
No.
No, we're just renewing the same, this is just a renewal of procedures we've...
Well, I thought we'd never done this before. No, it was just kind of a new thing this morning, I guess maybe so they can keep up with the equipment a little better. I had enclosed the list with all the serial numbers and the DMV tag numbers with the equipment that we have currently installed.
Okay. So the same equipment that resides over there will continue to be there, the same supplies they're going to keep shipping you, you're going to keep doing business the way you've been doing it, we're just documenting it in a way that we've never done before.
Correct. The only thing that will change will be, there, we've always been furnished all our cartridges and receipt paper and sticker paper, but now they're going to allocate so much for county and what we use, and then after we use, what's allocated to us, we'll have to start purchasing it. That goes year to year. That's only thing that's different.
So if you do higher volume than expected, you'll pay for some of those consumables, which is partially offset by fees that you collect?
Correct. And they're adding like a five percent growth per year on the...
Okay. All right. Any questions, gentlemen? Resolution's on the back. I'll run through the highlights of this resolution, which is a separate document. The State of Texas acting through the DMV is responsible for administering titles and registration. Let me see if there's anything different in here. Therefore, the County Commissioners Court does hereby resolve that the inter-local agreement is in the best interest of Titus County, and that the obligations and requirements set forth are properly within the legal authority of the contracting parties. So you agree to do it by their books, and they agree to continue to let you use their equipment and provide you with some, if not all, of your consumables.
Right.
All right, so we need to, at the request of Judy, sign this resolution for her with your approval.
Thank you.
All right.
Make a motion, we accept that inter-local agreement.
All right, Commissioner Fitch makes a motion that we approve an inter-local agreement between the State of Texas Department of Motor Vehicles and the county, including this resolution.
Second.
Wait a minute here.
I have a question. I don't know whether most people are aware that the county, I don't know why we do this, I don't have a clue, but we pay for a clerk to work down at the DPS. We don't know what she does, who she is, where she comes to work, but she's on our payroll, and then our, our cost to the county is forty-three thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars a year. And they'll, could she, why, why don't they...
Well, I think we're talking about two totally different things. Everything we're doing here has only to do with Judy Cook's office and the registration and titling of vehicles. You're referring to Ramona, I guess, at the DPS up the street by McDonald's?
I don't know. I just know that we, we, we spend that money, and I don't know why. The taxpayers need to know why. Why don't the DPS do some of their own works that it gives us? I don't know. I know it's two different things.
They're separate entities. We only do process models and registrations and things like that, dieting process, driving costs, so it's two separate entities. We don't have anything to do with drive costs.
Why we have to pay a county employee when that's a state-run office? We don't even know whether she comes to work or not. It's kind of a bad situation. We have that at the Ag Building also, just for your information.
I had a motion, you made a motion, right? And I don't, Commissioner Applewhite seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, I'll need your signatures on at least one of these. All we're doing is the resolution. Okay, all Commissioner signatures on that resolution. Okay, it's that time where we talk about, get an update on roadwork status from Commissioners. So I'll start, while y'all are signing that, I'll start Commissioner Riddle, Precinct One.
Well, trees, potholes, and the fact that we, we're rehabbing or have it ready to seal coat at least three miles, and may, maybe five, depending on how much money we have to buy the material, but we're preparing that much road to seal coat, and almost ready to go, hopefully next week, and I know that other guys do too, have some. That's it.
Okay, we've been shuffling equipment around, resurfacing on twenty-seven twenty, twenty-seven fifteen, and we want to wrap that up today, and we'll have it under control. We cleaned some ditches out on twenty-seven fifteen, and then we also cleaned some ditches on twenty-four hundred, twenty-four thirty-nine, and twenty-four seventy, where we're, we dug out a lot of soft spots where we're going to get ready for some chip sealing. And we started mowing on our second round, replaced a couple of signs, and we fixed a big washout on, on County Road Forty-four ten. And I've been borrowing a maintainer from Precinct Four, Jimmy Parker, my maintainer's getting the seal replaced. It should be finished today or tomorrow, and I appreciate that, Jimmy. Thank you very much for that. So I'm planning on starting some chip sealing around September seventeenth, on that Tuesday. So we're going to throw that date out there, and I'm going to try to finish up, make sure these roads are ready to start and get after it. I've already bought up three hundred tons of, of the gravel, so...
How much do you think you...
Uh, probably going to do about six miles immediately, and maybe by the end of October, maybe come back and do a few more miles.
If I were to do that in October, can we...
Uh, if it's warm weather and dry, probably, if I can keep it above fifty degrees.
I don't know the state, which is in August.
Yeah. Well, you start it early May, and it's pretty cool a couple nights there, but it worked out good, as long as it's dry. I'm keeping my fingers crossed on that. Otherwise, it'd be springtime to finish up, so.
Okay. Precinct...
All right.
We've got thirty-nine twenty, and we're finishing up on forty-two sixty-five, and we're going to do thirty-three fifty, where we can get those three roads chipped seal. And we got spraying, we go around curves and melt boxes and bridges, we've been, got, almost got it all done, and we're going to spray the nineteen-ten, nineteen-twenty-five, eighteen-twenty with this emulsion to do it for next year, and we're going to get, we've done thirty-two fifty last week with the cold mix, and got about three quarters of a mile, and made a difference, so. We had, we had trees last night, so I guess they just rotten, fell off, big oak tree fell in the middle of the road about two o'clock this morning.
Did you get that new emulsion material from Waco?
I'm going to, like I said, I just give him, I got to give him, I will call him, and I'll probably pick it up next week, or maybe pick some up Thursday, and be ready to do some next week, maybe.
Who's going to start the seal coat work first? Which precinct, probably?
I'm not sure when, Alice, you're just going, I have to see if you're going to be pretty quick, me and you going to be pretty close.
Yeah, I can, I'm flexible.
Okay.
We can, anytime, whatever we need.
Because all, all my places that have chipped seal, my material's going to be close to all three of those roads.
Yeah.
We'll have to have maybe four trucks to haul gravel, because then they'll be right there. And Sugar Hill, that's going to be right there on the road where it's going to be chipped seal. I'm going to put the material out there. And at Argo at thirty-two, thirty-three sixty, I said thirty-three fifty, I'm going to put it at Argo Community Center.
You're going to want your dump truck back, I've been borrowing from you all summer? That's another one I've been borrowing from, thank you for that.
But like I said, all of the, all my material's going to be, as far as chipping, it's going to be less than a mile from the work site.
So have y'all talked about who's going to go first, and what days we're assembling Arle's crews?
Well, I've got a thirty-one fifty-five, we're, have got it ready to put stabilizer in, probably if the weather don't keep it from it Wednesday, maybe, and Wednesday or Thursday, and, or maybe both, may take both of the days. And we will be, the only thing really, I'll need... And we will be, the only thing really I'll need then is a reclamer and a sheepfoot packer. And then I've got everything else I'll need. But that'll just be a couple of days there, and then somebody else can use it. And I've got a couple more roads that I'm doing some scavenging on, 4325, 4330, and 4340. I'm gonna do some scavenging on them and possibly have them ready to maybe seal coat them. After, I'm gonna let the other guys have their chance at it and get what they can get done while I'm still doing a little bit of the work here on these. But, and then I've got probably another three or four miles that I wanna try to seal coat before we finish up.
I might need to add, for your, everybody's information. With this equipment, I figure that what I've got planned is three days, but I promise you, we can do it less than two. Because we don't have to make half the road, then another half the road, go down the road and do it. I think it's gonna be a lot faster to seal coat.
Well, I'll just suggest maybe y'all, maybe sit here after the meeting is over and discuss who's gonna go first and what day, so that each of you, if each person is doing seal coat work is dependent upon the other three departments, y'all might better block out some dates.
Like I said, the emulsion, you know, the three roads I've got emulsion, you can put it on as long as it's just above, what, 30, 40 degrees? So right there, you know, we can do that, whether it's ever, won't take long to do that. But it's not, it's about two and a half miles on one, and about two miles on the other. That way they will set up this winter, where we can chip seal it next spring.
Do you have any chip sealing you're planning on doing this fall?
Well, I'm gonna have, I hope I get to next couple of weeks, when everybody's able. Like I said, I'm having all my stuff at the location, so it won't take me long to chip seal, like you said. With that truck, it should be.
I don't think, there's not, the way it works is, we can get it ready, and we don't have to have it. If somebody else needs it, whatever's convenient. It's very flexible. In other words, there's no, no hard plans. In other words, road is fixed and pounded and packed, and it's ready to go. And if we need to go do this one for two days, and nothing for three days next week, we can always get back to nine in three weeks, or whatever.
It's like Al said there a while ago, too. With this new chip sailor, or chipper and the new distributor truck, we can cover the whole road, you know, with one path. We don't have to go down one side and come back up the other side. We can do it all and be done with it.
Well, let me ask this. Who's gonna be the first one of you four to chip seal a road this month, next month? And what day is it gonna be?
Hmm, probably me, I guess, around mid-month, about the 17th, maybe, unless yours gets done quickly.
We got your next.
Okay. Well, why don't y'all put together a calendar, so that y'all could all look at it? And again, if you're, all of you are interdependent upon one another, it'd be good to get some dates scheduled, so that.
Well, it depends on the weather, the road gets ready, the caves in.
We've all been talking amongst ourselves, you know, it's not a, who's gonna do it, what?
Because we usually know where the equipment's at, so who's finishing up.
We kinda know where everything's at, so.
Okay. All righty.
Our big plans, we have some reclamer plans, and so we're swapping that around. We've been swapping packers and everything else, so.
Okay, well, let's move on to item number nine, considering possibly approve the sale of the Ettnair Maintenance Distributor Trailer to the City of Palestine. Do you still have a deal working with them?
Got a deal working with them. Talked to them Friday, and they're gonna get the Ettnair training guy we use, what's his name, that came down and trains us? He's gonna come get that trailer and come go show it to Palestine. They're gonna spray about, like you said, about 300 foot with a, in a demonstration. And he said that should seal the deal. And I said, I'm, he can tell them more about the trailer than we can, and he'll be a good salesman.
He's agreeing to do that, because we're buying?
Yeah, he's gonna come pick it up and borrow it one day.
All right. What do we need to approve? Do you have a tentative price?
And I'm not sure when their city council meeting is. I thought it was this week. But I think they won't see the trailer first, so it may be in a couple of weeks before they actually vote on it, so.
Do we need to take any action today to authorize, in other words, to let them know the court?
Yeah, I guess we need to. We drew a letter up and sent to them with the price, so I just make a motion, we sell it to them for 48,000, upon their approval. Just upon their city council approval, unless they change their mind, so.
Do you want to leave some wiggle room in there if they make you an offer that's less than that?
There's no less than that, no less. That's solid rock right there. Not a penny less.
We priced it to them at 50, and they countered at 48, so.
Hagling.
But they hadn't seen it yet.
Yeah, but still, that's what it's gonna be.
The guy that I'm dealing with from Waco, he was the one that actually talked to them about it. And they called me, and I told them to call John, because he had dealt with Ettnair and all of that, too. So I told them the best thing for them to do, rather than trying to go through me and then me go through John and all that, was to just call him. So that's what we did, and they, they're really pleased with it so far. I mean, like I said, they might change their mind when they, after they see it work or whatever. If it's not something they're looking for, but from what George told me, they're, it's a pretty set deal.
Okay. Got it all washed and waxed?
I need to, and I know all of you probably know it, but before we use this new oil truck, Edna wants to be here the first time and work with us the first day we use it.
And that's a good idea, so that.
And if that, if that's the, I mean, if I find out today that we're gonna try to do that at the end of, by the end of the week, I'll get back with them and let them know, see if their schedule will work out with that to come be with us that day.
I've got a motion from Commissioner Fitch to approve the sale of the distributor trailer to the City of Palestine for $48,000. Second. Second by Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye. And we'll hope that you can get that done. Item number 10, considering possibly approve an upgrade to the fire alarm system at the annex. I have no dollar figures here for you. I just want to discuss this topic. You heard what Glenn Calvert said about the annex building, and regardless of what we do over there and when we do it, right now, today, you do not have a functioning fire alarm at the annex. If those upstairs floors or downstairs floors were to catch fire, you would not have any notification to the local fire department, nor would you have any internal sirens to warn everybody to get out of that building. And if it, fire broke out upstairs, you heard him tell you that the potential for a roof collapse upstairs before anybody knew it is a possibility. So armed with that information, I think we need to do something about it. I think that, and I have no idea of the dollar cost, not even telling you who would do the work. We have an existing company that knows that system, that has done our work, but we don't necessarily have to use them. I do not think that this is gonna be an over $50,000 job. I don't know. I'm just gonna guess $5,000 to $10,000 to get some basic functioning fire alarm units installed and get that panel that's already over there back functioning. And I would suggest that we call Zach, who I've worked with for the last eight years, out of Paris with our current fire protection company. And he's just waiting on us to say, yes, we want you to put together a plan over there and get us a functioning fire alarm. I will not spend any money with him until he comes back and gives us his assessment and what he thinks needs to be done. I don't know if he'll have to have that system designed by an engineer. He may have to. So again, I don't know what the cost is. I'm simply asking you, do you want me to proceed with doing that? Or do you want to leave that system just the way it is, non-functioning, and not spend any money on it if we're going to do work on an annex project?
I'll make a motion, go ahead and try to get it fixed, repaired.
Okay. That you'll, that you'll give me the permission to start getting some plan and dollars put together by Advanced Fire Alarm out of Paris?
Yes.
Okay. Motion is made by Commissioner Riddle?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fitch. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Item number 11, discuss the county annex project with possible action to follow. Don't know what we might do today, other than make this, make our discussions a little more public with what, with what you are thinking. Based on the last meeting that we had with Glenn Calvert, it is my understanding that you all are all for in agreement that rather than a remodel considered at the annex, that we are talking about a replacement of that building in that same location. Before I discuss any more details, is that right? And the last time that we met, you told me to go ahead and talk to the other landowners that are on that city block back there, which consists of the building directly behind the back porch of the annex that is owned by the estate of James Spears. James passed away recently, and I've spoken to his son-in-law, who happens to be named Brett Thomas, not the auctioneer. But Brett and I have talked, and they have painted that building, and they were getting ready to do interior work to get that building looking better in an effort to sell it. So they would love to reach an agreement with the county if you are interested in purchasing that building before they have to do any more work to it. I've also discussed with Patty, the owner of Clemmons Insurance. I just gave her our initial thoughts and told her what we were thinking about. She's not real excited about the prospect of having to move her business, but she's in the thinking stages right now, and I will go back and visit with her probably again this week. So no prices have been arrived at. But again, before I keep moving forward, I want to be sure I'm going in the right direction by first attempting to procure those two properties to give us complete ownership of that block.
That sounds like the direction.
Anyone want to add to that, or give me something else to be working on? Any guidance on how you would want us to come up with an agreed price for those properties?
You're in the real estate business, I mean, you know a lot more than I do.
I really would have nothing to do with that. In my discussions with Brett Thomas, we talked about possibly hiring an appraiser, rather than getting a local real estate agent involved, maybe hiring an independent appraiser to appraise that building. And I would suggest the same thing for the Clemmons Insurance building. Not that she would be willing to sell it for that. I don't know. But let me have some more discussions with them, and then maybe come back with the next step, such as hiring an independent appraiser to at least come up with an initial starting point. And so that would be the first step in eventually owning that entire block over there that would give us complete flexibility as to what we wanted to do next in the way of demolition and rebuild of all or part of what's currently on that block back there. And this will be a long-term project and an expensive project, and it could fall apart anywhere along the way, but we've begun the process at least. I don't know of any action to take, other than authorizing me to continue discussion with the two landowners to try to come up with a price that could be presented to the court.
Sounds good. I'll make a mo, and include hiring an appraiser if they need, that's a motion that you do that.
Well, I think we'll want an appraiser regardless, even if they were to give us a price that we thought was a good price, I think it'd be smart to have an appraiser give us, give us an opinion. Appraisers not gonna be free, obviously, so we'll want to keep that in consideration before we make any decisions. But I won't be doing, I won't be making any deals that y'all are not completely aware of. So Commissioner Riddle has made a motion that authorizes me to continue discussions with the two landowners.
And hire an appraiser.
And hire an appraiser, all right. And hire an appraiser.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Fitch. All in favor, say aye. Item number 12, consider and possibly propose a 2019 tax rate of 50.85 cents. This is that time of the budget process, one of the first steps that we do publicly, and that is to propose a tax rate. This is not voting on a final tax rate. This is proposing a tax rate. 50.85 is exactly the same as it was last year. No change to that. We have discussed this here of late. In order to maintain continued improvement of our roads and giving you all the monies that you need in those road and bridge funds in order to do that, sharing of the cost of a new fire truck potentially, we're not voting on that today, but we will be voting on that in the future. The city did approve the purchase of a fire truck to be shared with the county. We will have to put that on a future agenda, but in order, but factoring that in and assuming we're going to have to fund about $305,000 of that cost, that's another consideration in keeping this tax rate the same. And then, of course, plans to move forward with the annex project and hopefully be able to do that without having to raise the tax rate and instead keep our interest in sinking fund tax rate stable with the reduction of some debt this past year that we had incurred 15 years ago on the purchase of, for the purchase of Right Away for Harts Bluff and Chapel Hill. That bond has been paid off. So we have some available funds at this time that we could use for a future annex project. In order to do that, I think that it's important that you not back off of that tax rate, but at the same time, we find ourselves in a comfortable position to not have to raise the tax rate, I believe, this year. So that is what I would propose, 50.85, no change from 2018.
I think we should try to give some, give some, the rate lower to the taxpayer. In 2012, when Lumina first made their reduction in value, we lost a million eight. We sued them. They finally gave us some back. We agreed to 825 million on value, so I don't know how many dollars that we've gained. But then we gave all the county employees a $1,200 a year raise. When we settled with Lumina, and they paid us some more money, raised it to 825. So this year, they went from 400 and something thousand, or three years ago, to 50,000. So we increased, back then, we increased the rate 11 point something percent in 2012 to make up for the loss. This year, we paid, they paid us a million four seven, and everybody's valued, and their property went up. So that rate, if we don't lower that rate, we should give some of that money back that we got from Lumina. And I realize the annex, and I agree, but the people, I think that's the reason that the legislature the last two years has fought on a ceiling that entities could raise without going through the voters, and like it was 8%. And they persuaded a bunch of commissioners to agree to that. But it finally ended up, finally passed after four years. but it finally ended up, finally passed after four, four years of 3.5. So we can raise the tax rate 3.5 or that any, anybody can, I, I don't know, school board has a different situation, to, if we need it to build an annex. And then I have another question of, uh, in our loop on our fund balances, we have, uh, 3 million something sitting there and, and for the Loop Fund, and I never, we're through with the Loop, aren't we?
We're through with the Loop, what we have to do with that money, Alice, it's 2.4 million, I have to give you all your cash portion, there's 2.4 million in the construction fund. We finished with about a million five and then we got 3950,000 dollars in a lawsuit settlement, all that money sitting in that construction fund. I put it in CD, CD matures September 13th. When the CD matures, that money's going to be moved to the INS fund, so you're going to have about $6 million in the INS fund. Under the proposal, we're doing, we're, we're taking, we're taking part of that money every year and reducing the INS tax rate and using that fund to pay part of those payments on the INS that we're responsible for. You mentioned a couple of meetings ago about, well, maybe paying, actually taking that money, just paying some of the debt off. You can do that, but I checked with the bond people, the earliest we can do that is 2022. I believe it's 2022, I don't know where I told the judge.
22.
So that's, that's the way, you know, between now and then, we can use some of that money to pay down that, to keep the INS rate down. And then when it gets to 2022, if you want to take the balance of what's left, which will probably be $5 million at that time, you can take it all and pay it down if that's what you want to do. There's some things you'll have to think about at that time, I won't be the one to help you, Barbara, with me, but, uh, there's reasons to pay it out a little bit at a time as opposed to paying it all at one time, but, but that's y'all's choice, you can make that decision at that time. But you can't pay it off before 2022, so we're just taking some of the money and paying it on the debt to low to keep the tax rate down on the INS side.
And I, and I think Commissioner Riddle, I, I understand where you're coming from. I'm trying to set this court up so that over the next five years, that can, there can be very, very minimal, uh, if any, tax increases, rather than dropping it now and having to go back up, uh, in the future. That's, I'm trying to smooth this out, rather than have fluctuations, but I do understand what you're saying and we are capable of doing that if, if you all so choose, capable of, of lowering the rate if you so choose.
Another thing is the fire department. I'd, I'd like, uh, to rehash this thing. We went, we, in 2016, they wanted more money, they couldn't get enough volunteer firemen, so they wanted a shift, they, and so we gave them $180,000, added it to our contract that we had for 10 years, so they could have three firemen during the daytime, because most volunteer firemen have other jobs and they wanted to work during that. So we forked over $180,000 a year for them to add a shift for the daytime. And then 2018, they come back and wanted, I think they wanted about 500,000 more a year to go with their 390 or whatever it was, plus the 180, plus they wanted, uh, so we ended up giving them 400 and something thousand dollars extra, almost a million dollars, we paid them. And now they want this other truck, we've got a pumper truck for both, both fire stations and I guess the third one is, they, they have illusions of, well, we're paying for our third fire station. Uh, and to have that truck, I, I don't think we should be involved in that truck. We pay them good money to help our volunteer firemen and I think we should consider, before we fork over 300 and some thousand dollars, we should consider creating the county fire department. Most counties around here that do it, that's just 2% or 3% of their budget. This is about 10% of our budget, this million dollars, million two, 10% of our operating budget right now goes to the city of Mount Pleasant's fire department. Somewhere in there, there has to be a line drawn and I think this 318 crosses that line that we have, that they're asking us for now, just in, just for information purposes.
Yeah, that, that is a huge subject to, uh, to tackle and it is very, very multifaceted and we will have to have future discussions on that. And, and creating a county fire department is always and has always been, uh, a possibility.
$300,000 makes me think a little harder, maybe we should rush it up. When you combine the other funds that we've given them.
Got to propose a tax rate, gentlemen. You've heard Commissioner Riddle's plea.
I'll make a motion that we accept the 50.85 cent tax rate.
Richard, let me tell you how, I think you probably have the word is, I think you have to break it down to the INS M and O.
Okay.
So let me tell you all, if, if that's the rate you're going to propose, the INS rate is 7.62, the M and O rate is 43.23.
43, 23, and 762.
That's your 50.85. And this is the proposal, you have to propose one so that you can discuss it over the next 30 days and then at the last meeting in September, y'all will vote for tax rate. You can adopt this tax rate, you can adopt any tax rate you want to, but that, this is the proposed one, that's the, so let's, please start the discussion. 7.62.
That was about 12%.
It was, we're going to have to. What, what we did in this budget, here's what last year's rates were, y'all can send and prepare. Last year, the INS rate was 1233.
Yeah.
Last year, the M and O rate was 3852. This year, we lowered the INS rate to 762 and raised the M and O rate to 4323. That, that involved two different things happening. Number one is, we paid off the bond, so while they lowered the rate, that $200,000, I think it's only about 165,000, okay, that we don't have to pay. Number two, we're taking part of that $6 million that's in the INS funds and reserve, I'm taking 350 of that money, paying it on the debt and lowering the rate down some more. So that's, other place that that rate's going down. And I'm taking that 350 and putting it on the M and O to give the four precincts $100,000 more of the road. That's, that's why the rate stays the same.
Okay, a motion is on the table by Commissioner Fitch to propose tax rate of 50.85. You've heard the breakdown, interest in sinking 7.62, maintenance operations 43.23.
I'll second it.
Was that Commissioner? Commissioner Parker seconds, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
No.
Opposed?
No.
Okay. So I've got two and two, any further discussion on this? Commissioner Riddle has expressed his opinions, anybody else want to express theirs? I always gain insight when I hear you guys. Since I'm the deciding vote, I'd like to hear some opinions.
Well, I like the idea that we're going to keep the rate the same. We're going to let the taxpayers get a little, uh, benefit from that same rate, because we'll have this, we'll be setting pretty good to have some money we can put into our road system. Also, we'll have some money to put back in case we need to do this, which looks like it's coming, uh, this, uh, annex building, whatever we're going to remodel or rebuild for the district court's annex. So that would help us, uh, if that same, uh, trend continues for five or six years, we'll pay cash for that building. And that's taxpayers paying for it, without being, raising our tax rate. So I'm hoping that the days of raising that tax rate are over with, hope we can keep it like this for a while.
If appraised values go up and the rate stays the same, the taxpayers are going to have to pay more money.
But there is a certain portion of how that we allow the taxes to be frozen, which we, which, which, we may be the only entity that's freezing taxes in this area, but we freeze taxes, so anybody that's over 65 on their homestead, and I don't make any business of it now, but on their homestead, they're, they're on a program, so their taxes should not be going up, unless they add on the house or something.
You mean this past year, our tax rates, I mean, our tax values?
People over 65, they're always, no, they're always, they don't, if their taxes weren't supposed to go up.
My taxes went up on, that was only my homestead, my other properties went up.
We've had, uh, with the city and all this, the county, the taxes is still going to raise regardless of, you know, as far as we raise ours or not, and, because they got the school, our bond and everything, and it's still going to cost taxpayers money.
What would you like to see us do?
You know, like I said, lower 1% or something, you know, whatever, whatever we can, you know.
Well, again, what we can do, I guess, is a matter of perspective. What we can do is, you can, you can take a pretty good sized dip this year, but if you want to maintain your road expenditures into future years and not just have a one shot in the arm, and if you want to consider being able to have to finance very little, if any, of an annex rebuild, you're looking at having to come right back and then you're facing that potential 3.5% debt ceiling issue that's been voted on. So I, I agree with you. If I wasn't looking at having to rebuild that annex, if that is y'all's choice, and if you're willing to cut back in the future on, on these road expenditure increases, I, I think we could very comfortably lower that rate by a percentage point. I just want you to understand how, you know, what's been, what's my motive, motivation here, and that's consistency rather than up and downs. Anybody else want to pitch in on this? All right, I'm going to cast the final vote in favor of maintaining this tax rate at 50.85. And that gives us a 3-2. I appreciate the comments, Commissioner Riddle and Commissioner Applewhite. I, uh, I think everybody up here agrees with parts of your, uh, parts of your argument and I hope you understand what, what mine is. Item number 13, approve oral and written reports.
Now, just, just a couple of points in here, fellas, you'll see that, uh, we transferred some money around in favor of that freight home and, uh, inside 19, which was a special road bridge, $17,000. One of my somebody left in there is, might expect repairs to name it on those pieces with the, the gas home. Because I hope there's not a lot of repairs left in those, because most of that stuff moved.
You can eventually zero that out.
No, I'm going to leave that, I'm going to leave that, that's for the, uh, shared equipment, so we're going to take the gas and any repairs to name it to those.
Okay, no one, nothing else, nothing else to purchase, just?
Well, like I said, something else here, or want to buy something else.
They, they did agree to give $2,000 back on that, the people we bought the water truck, so we got a little bit back. Right, but we did get a little and, uh, it's, like I said, if it was, we took care of it back then, it wouldn't have cost us so much.
For next year's budget, is there any, I don't have any budget, but is there any shared equipment? If you're looking at the county needing to buy anything, thanks for all of this. Shared, not, not, not equipment for you to be with the precincts, but shared equipment, anything else that needs to buy. Because I don't have any budget in there, the gas and all the repairs, coming back $25,000.
Shared, I don't think.
Not that I know of, shared that I know of.
Well, Judge, on forward, there'll be about $5,000.
I got, yeah, I got to, you know, I got to go lease a little mini excavator for one day, but that's, that's on my precinct, because like I said.
Right below that, you see the four precincts, how much money each of you have, that's the numbers right there. The only other item that ran your attention is what I was talking about, that's back on page, uh, three, the fourth is the number down. And you'll see the Loop Construction, right, there's 2,427. And the Brad, got 416,000 sitting in the checking account, I got 2,011, so the CDs aren't going to better rate. That CD matures September 13th, because at that time, I'll close this fund down and roll that money over to the INS fund. It can only be used in a bond.
Make a motion. Okay, motion to approve, the report is made by Commissioner Applewhite.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Parker, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item 14 is our treasurer's report.
Making a motion, approve of treasurer's report.
Motion's made by Commissioner Fitch for approval.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Applewhite, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item 15, approve any budget amendments.
This is number 26 through 39, Doug. This is about here, so I have to play around with those lots, not changes, some of it's not.
Any new money here?
Yeah, of course, some of it's going to be new money. Uh, number 26 is, uh, moving $150 in the county extension agents out of their contingency money or miscellaneous money up to traveling seminars.
$150.
$150, that's that one. I think everybody's seen all these. Uh, number 27 is in the sheriff's commissary, it's not really new money, we just have to kind of budget every year how much they're going to, uh, bring in from the commissary store over to the commissary account and then he's able to use whatever money is there to buy things for the jail. Well, he bought a walk-in freezer a little earlier this year, we paid for it out of here and he's also bought some tasers, which we checked and they do qualify to be paid out of here, so, uh, again, I just waited kind of towards the end of the year to actually clean up the budgets, some of these items were bought a couple of months ago.
Freezer, $14,000.
$14,000 and $45,000. Yes. Uh, 28 is in two parts, uh, the first one is, a little earlier this year, District Attorney used his drug forfeiture money to buy some drones for the sheriff's department, $26,000. And then, uh, there was some pre-trial interaction fees that get paid in, this particular pre-trial, all the money goes to the county attorney's department and there was more came in than I, than, than we budgeted, which was good, it's $1,825, so.
They're both 28.
This is District Attorney's.
Yes.
Drug forfeiture fund, he used $26,000 to buy the sheriff some drones.
I don't know if that's one drone, or one? I don't know, maybe it's several. Number 29 is just line item cleanups inside the general fund, mostly, the, you know, we pulled it out of contingency, it's $151,000 came out of contingency, uh, $90,000 went to the stairs, uh, $4,300 went to some repairs at the weigh station, uh, $10,000 went to autopsies, because they run a little higher than I budgeted, and, uh, about another $5,000 went to, uh, to, uh, to, uh, transporting for medical out of the sheriff's department. And then, uh, 10- And then $10,000, my water bills are a little higher this year, but I think that's because they raised the water rates when they bought that. Some more of that water I didn't make, Bob Sanders.
Every one of these items that you just mentioned were utilizing our contingency fund. We started off the budget year with how much?
300, 300,000.
300,000.
And right now, you're going to have left $143,000.
You'd roughly have with this, and these are just items that, 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 unnoted expenses, the riots where we went over, higher transports of prisoners, higher autopsy expense, unanticipated stair repairs.
And the waste station, we did some repair work out of the waste station, I believe it was $4,300.
Yeah, we'd had to.
Had to do something for scale.
And also, like, and that's why that was the repairs, and the scale.
This is the security fund, and again, it's just line item transfers, just moving money out of miscellaneous, mainly to cover part-time bailiffs. If y'all recall, we paid for the second bailiff over there out of the security fund. We didn't know exactly how many hours they were going to work, they're working more hours than I originally budgeted, but there's money in the courthouse security, it's just not listed in their line items, so I'm moving that one.
All that.
Yeah.
Yeah, some insurance out of the security fund, right.
Next one is just inside the INS fund, we brought in a little more interest income, and the bond fees were a little higher than I, than I budgeted for, so if those wash each other out, again, that's just a line item change.
What are the bonds, who pays that?
You have to pay a fee to those bonding companies to handle those bonds for us every year. Usually around $1,000, a little higher than that per bond, a little higher than that this year.
We need to earn that.
I bumped it up, hell, I don't know, I think I left it at 1,000, yeah, because some years it's higher than others, I'm not real sure what. It's kind of like our dues and bonds for y'all's offices are higher the year you're elected than they already other year, so I don't know what the deals are close. Maybe because we did those 16 and 17, maybe, so we had a little more. These are in precincts, and it's mainly, it's just transfer some money around inside the precinct. This precinct's one, it moves some money out of supplies down to culverts. I might as well do all those right together. This is precinct three, and it moved money out of road oil up to part-time salaries in contingency. This is precinct four, and he moved some out of contingency to part-time salaries for the summer. This is two, and he moved money out of contingency to culverts, trash pickup, and some mileage This is also precinct four, he moved some money out of road materials to gas and oil. And this is precinct two, where he moved money out of, he moved money out of road oil up to other road materials for the main park. We also pulled money out of bridges and supplies, miscellaneous and contingency, and it all went to road. Those line items inside the front. This one is transferring in some money to cover repairs to that water truck, and the top of the switch for the freight line, that's inside 19, the shared equipment. That, the cooler and manifold leak.
This came out of contingency?
No, came, well, it might have come out of contingency, came, $10,000 came out of contingency, and then $10,000 was transferred in because I had to cover that cost a little. So I put some money back in there, so I'd have some money for the rotate stuff, the gas and oil. And then this last one is to transfer over to cover the additional training inside the town hall fire department, I moved it out of contingency.
Travel, travel, education, rights.
That's him.
Any questions about any of the issues? You see all side of these?
Make a motion to approve the budget amendments.
This is number, motion is to approve.
26 through 39.
Budget amendments, number 26 through 39.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Applewhite. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item 16, sign order, pay orders, approve payments of bills.
Make a motion to pay our bills.
Motion is made to do so by Commissioner Applewhite.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, closing comments. Sorry for the inconvenience of two locked-up courthouse doors today. We've gotten all of our nice new coatings on our steps, but unfortunately, the guys doing the work left with the keys to the padlocks and the chains. So until tomorrow morning, you're limited to the north entry and the west entry. Do not use these others, but.
North entry's open, then?
Uh-huh. You'll still see a bunch of fencework and stuff out there, but tomorrow, they will pick all that stuff up. So please note the nice new coating on all of the steps that adds some needed grit to give us wet, wet surface traction and snow and ice damage prevention, and new coat of paint on the inside of those walls coming up the steps. Looks very good, it ought to. Now, the county park, Luminate has made the decision to permanently close the county park. You'll recall, a couple of years ago, they were able, after we got out of the park business, they were able to get a private individual to agree to manage that park. I do not know all the reasons why that did not work out. I believe it was voluntary on, on the part of the individual that took that lease over. But according to Mr. Watson, Brad Watson that we've dealt with, he has explained to me, and it's important that everyone understand, this is not a county decision, the county has nothing to do with this decision. We made the decision a couple of years ago to get out of the county park business. According to Brad Watson, our position remains that the park is permanently closed. I had, he said it remains. He initially called me a week and, two weeks ago, and told me that this was their plan. I had forwarded him a request by an interested party that wanted to be able to keep at least a functioning boat ramp out there. Luminate says, no, we're sorry. Our position remains that the park is permanently closed because of the historical difficulty of managing it, and we don't want to make a permanent commitment on the property that a future owner may not want. So they are in the process of finding a buyer for that property, or a liability transfer company where they can dump all of their liability onto a new party and be out of the reclamation, et cetera, et cetera, business. And rather than entering into some kind of an agreement with somebody that affects that park, they're going to leave it closed for the time being. Who knows what the new owner may want to do, but right now, I'm sorry to say, the county park is closed out there, and Monticello is not available for boats going in and out through that boat ramp. I think that's the only two items that I had. Commissioner Parker?
I don't know.
Okay. Commissioner Applewhite?
Keep Cheryl in her prayers for her recent tragedy and everything. Keep praying for her.
Indeed.
For the record, I was, my pay was wrong this year, so me and Carl got it straight, he's going to take it down my next three checks. We just, it just came to our attention when we were doing budget stuff that I, I was getting the raise that was voted on last year or something. And when I come into office, I did not want that raise, but I never did notice the extra $50 a month, so paying that back, $300 or $312 or something.
Wow. So. You can clap.
I was the highest paid commissioner. Can you imagine that?
As good while it lasted.
It's hard to get away with that. With this group, that's going to be hard to get away with. So anyway.
Now you're the lowest paid for a while.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else?
No, I'm good.
Anything you want to add on that county park?
Um, no, the county park is history before my time, and I think it's, it is, it's a lot of upkeep. There's a lot of, there's a lot of going on out there at that county park, so.
Well, you'll probably bear the brunt of phone calls.
Yeah, we've been sharing some this weekend, so.
I got one Thursday, I guess, who was, and I told them, they probably need to call you, because I didn't know anything about it.
And this deal with Luminate's been, I mean, the, the deal with Luminate is on the seesaw, it's teeter tottering back and forth, and it's part of their deal to get that, to close on their deal, so I can see their point, let the next owner deal with the liabilities of it.
There's no point in sending any more calls to Commissioner Fitch, just say, we have been out of that park now for two years, this is a Luminate decision, we have no role in this.
Well, one of the reasons, I told them to call him, I told, told them that, that we, we had gotten out of it and all, and I, I told him, I said, but, he said, well, is there not any other place we can launch a boat out there? And I said, I don't know of any place, but I said, you might call Commissioner Fitch and ask him about it.
Well, I'm not sure we can, I, I'm not sure we can build a, a ramp to access their lake anyway, so we better be careful what we, what we say, and just, you know, we will hope that something changes in the future, but for now, this is a Luminate decision of which the county has no input. Commissioner Riddle?
No.
Okay. All right, thank you, everyone, for your patience today, appreciate you coming. It's 10:45, and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Applewhite, second by Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.